...the meeting of the Livonia City Council. Please rise. Councilman Scott Morgan will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Again, welcome to tonight's regular meeting. This is a voting meeting. The minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting on Monday, May 8th of 2023. Ms. Nash, will you please take the attendance?
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
Vice President Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Donovan?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present. We have five here tonight. You'll notice that Ms. McIntyre and Mr. Barr are not here. They are out on prior obligations, I believe work-related. At this time, I would take a motion for the minutes of the April 10th meeting.
So move.
Support.
Motion by Toy, support by McCullough. Is there any additions or comments from the council? Any additions or comments from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on that, please?
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The minutes pass. At this time, the council has set aside up to 30 minutes for audience communication. Audience members may address the council for up to three minutes on any topic that is not on the agenda this evening. Do we have any audience communication? If you do, please line up or be ready quickly to stand up when the preceding person is done. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
I'm Deb Christensen, Livonia, Michigan. Hi. So today's the 24th of April. In seven days, it will be May 1, and 30 days thereafter, it will be June, which is Pride Month. And I recall almost a year ago that the council talked about not having any signage, but putting something to the Committee of the Hole with regard to how we're going to address that as a city. And I don't know what the Committee of the Hole means. Does that mean a black hole? Because I have heard nothing about what we're going to do to recognize Pride Month. Thank you. I look forward to hearing back from somebody. Thanks.
Thank you. Who's next? We can't be too long. You only get three minutes. Good evening, sir. It's good to see you.
Good evening. My name is Darryl Smith, and I live at 14006 Brookfield. It's nice to see you all again. I had a stroke on October 23rd, and for part of the month of November, they were using a hoist to get me from the bed to the wheelchair, and this arm wouldn't work at all, so I'm making progress. Do have a therapy twice a week. One of the reasons that I wanted to come down here and talk was to say how important the Livonia shuttle is, the bus that comes and picks me up, and a hoist for the wheelchair going in, takes me to therapy twice a week, on Tuesdays and Fridays. Of course, now I'm of the impression I watched last week's meeting, and I'm afraid that I make it down to one time a week. It's kind of...well, anyway, I'll save that for another time. Anyway, I wanted to thank you all for the service that Livonia gives its handicap citizens.
Thank you, sir. So we had a meeting, I believe, last Wednesday, and the topic that you're referring to came up specifically in regards to only taking one trip per week. And we had the people from Livonia Transit in the meeting, and they said that that is not true, that they don't know where that came from, but that that was not true. That's the information that was relayed to us.
Councilperson McIntyre brought that up, as though it was going to a committee, and she was suggesting that the committee should be prioritized so that they could take care of that business. So maybe things that had been in front of the council before.
Yeah, the meeting took place last Wednesday. The limit on rides to once a week is not true, as far as we've been told. Okay?
Yeah, because I'm fortunate that my therapy is in Livonia, and so they'll take me there and bring me back. My doctor's appointments are outside Livonia, so we do the best we can, you know? But it's an excellent service, and the seniors deserve it, and the handicap people as well. I would be in serious trouble without it. I'd be getting therapy at home and not have as good as at the recovery project on Hubbard near Plymouth. So thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you, sir. Again, it's good to see you. We wish you well in your recovery.
Nice to see you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sure you'll see me some more.
We hope.
Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Matthew Shalam. I live at 8844 Cardwell Drive. I live in the nice little corner of Livonia where Westland, Redford meet. Let me start off by saying I moved here seven years ago. This was a diamond in the rough area I found. I just...we've enjoyed our time here. We live on a very quiet, peaceful street. We love our neighbors. Livonia has been the best city I've ever lived in. So with that said, this is why I'm here today. There's a venue going up right next door to my house, and what I'm going to do is I've got some packets to you. Each one of you take one. There's two of them. One will give you news articles on the venue that's coming in, and others are going to be satellite pictures of where my house is, where this building is. And you guys can take a look at it at your leisure. So pass those around, please. First of all, when this venue started to come in and sold six months ago, they sold the building. We didn't know what it was. Everybody in the neighborhood started speculating on what it was going to be. We started doing a little bit more investigation. I came up with some news articles online from the Detroit News and from the Detroit Free Press about how this lounge that they're going to be bringing in here had been... They've been...the citizens of Dearborn had fought to get it out of their city, had brought in a lot of violent crimes and illicit activities. Okay, with that said, with one of the pictures, I took a picture of the City of Livonia thing they put on the door, and it does say at this point that there is to be no alcoholic beverages on the premises unless our council approves it. I don't know how long...I talked to Frank, the inspector, today. He doesn't know if they have a liquor license yet, or there's no liquor license as of yet available. But the second packet I gave you is the Facebook website of the Live Lounge, where you can see that they have bars in there. They even have...they have a couple bars that they built in there, and they even have alcoholic beverages pictured on their website. First of all, you know that's going to be a big concern. We live on a very quiet street. We have no sidewalks. And if you look at the satellite imaging, you'll see that this parking lot only has like 23 spaces available. So we don't know where all these people are going to park for a nightclub lounge type of atmosphere. And we have a feeling that they're all going to want to park on the street in front of our driveways, which bringing this type of...bringing this type of business here in so close proximity of a lot of homes, it's going to destroy our home values.
15 seconds.
Okay. Just living there, I know living on that corner, I'll never be able to sell. But I have also a petition. I know it says revoking the liquor license. I'm not sure if it has it, but we do not want any type of liquor being sold here. I will also submit this to you. You can bring this into the government records. Do you have any questions?
That's time.
That's the time. Actually, I'm going to tell you to hold those petitions. We don't have any kind of application before us at this time. You may want those later on, though. Okay?
Very good.
As of right now, there's nothing for us to decide. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, and we'll look into it.
Yes, please look into it and come up with the best decision you can come up with.
There is no decision to be had at this point. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
Thank you.
We can't decide who landlords rent to. If they do have an application for a liquor license, that will become in before us eventually.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else for audience communication? I see none. Okay. At this point in time, I'll go to the council for any announcements from the council. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to touch on something that residents just spoke about, the Live Lounge. First and foremost, thank you for your service, so I see the hat you're wearing. Second of all, to Mr. Toramina, this Live Lounge, would this be a similar scenario from what we talked about in our zoning? These new event center spaces that are serving alcohol, but they're not serving alcohol? Is this similar to this, or is this something completely different, this Live Lounge? I don't mean to put you on the spot either. I know this just came up, so if you don't have the answer now, I understand. But I know we recently, for the residents here, we've recently been talking about these new event centers that they rent out space to different events, and whether it be a birthday party or this sort of celebration and what have you, then the customers bring in their outside alcohol, and it's kind of a gray area. So I'm not sure if this is specific to this situation, or if this Live Lounge is going to be more of a syllified business, and this is separate from what we just talked about.
Thank you. I'm not aware of this particular proposal at this location, so unfortunately, I can't answer what the business use would be in this case. President Jolly is correct. If it involves a liquor license, then it'll have to go through that process, which includes a legal use review. If it's a banquet center under the proposed zoning ordinance changes, then that too would have to go through a special land use approval process.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. I appreciate that. Also, I want to touch on Solely Underground has started their construction next to Whispering Willows, and they're essentially digging a big culvert with a retention pond and alleviating some of the infrastructure issues. I went out there myself and looked at it, and it was really awesome, because this has been a problem that the city council's been dealing with, and I just want to say great job to Todd Zalinski and his department in the engineering. I'd like to give a good shout out to the mayor and her administration and the city council. I mean, there's a lot of work that had to get done to get this grant, and I think it was roughly about $1 million, the grant dollars, and immediately, they started to tackle this problem and alleviate a lot of flooding in that area. Unfortunately, there is other infrastructure issues in the city, and I know the engineering department and the mayor's office and council are actively working on trying to alleviate some of those issues, but it is nice to see that money get put to work immediately, and hopefully here in the next few weeks, that project will be completed, at least the first phase, and help those neighbors in that area not experience the vast amount of flooding that they've been experiencing for a long time now. So great job to council, to the mayor's office, and the engineering department, and Solely Underground Construction. Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it.
Ms. Toy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to give a shout out to our DPW people. The Woodchipper has been pretty busy. Neighbors of mine said they put out the branches within like a day. Livonia city was by. I had a visitor at my house, and they said, "You're so lucky to have something like that in your city, because we don't have it in ours." And so you've got to commend the folks that are doing that work. It's unbelievable how many branches were down from those storms, et cetera. So kudos to them. We're very lucky.
Thank you. Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to take a moment to address one of the audience comments was the Committee of the Hole. We did hold a meeting. I don't have the exact date, but I want to say it was a few months back that we did have a discussion along... And basically, a recommendation was put to the administration. I have heard rumblings that there are things that are potentially on the books for June. The best I could say is stay tuned, and we can look into some stuff, and I could maybe even take it offline to see if there's more coming. The second thing I did have is mark your calendars for Saturday, June 3rd. Livonia Save Our Youth is going to be having their Run to Save Our Youth 5K. Everything goes to their incredible organization. The other event that we have going right now is our Livonia First Responder Foundation is raffling off in 2023 Easy Go Express S4 Kart. Lot of words, but it's a pretty awesome-looking golf cart slash ATV. All the funds go directly to our First Responders Foundation. Tickets are $20, and there's a drawing on May 6th. You can pick up your tickets by visiting Livonia Police Department and/or City Hall. They'll have tickets available. And lastly, I want to give a shout out to my eight-year-old Harper, who loved to just hang out with us on this wonderful Monday night. She want to learn more about her local government. We'll see if she can make it both meetings. Thank you.
Anything else from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Ms. Toy?
I forgot a very important thing that's happening on Wednesday. It seems like it's somebody's birthday, and yeah, it's you. You're right. So we want to wish our president, Jim Jolly, very, very happy birthday.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If there's nothing... If there's nothing else, I have a birthday wish to send out. My daughter Claire turns 10 today, so she's at home maybe watching. I'm not so sure. She might be on the trampoline or doing something else. But we had a chance to have cake and ice cream and all that kind of stuff. So Claire, happy birthday. We're super proud of you. We love you. And with that, we will go on to the agenda. Tonight, we have reports from the mayor and other city officials, specifically a communication from the Department of Finance dated March 22nd of 2023, forwarding various financial statements from the City of Livonia, ending January 31 of 2023. Also, from the Department of Finance, a report dated April 4th of 2023, forwarding departmental purchase reports for the month ending in March 31st of 2023. We do not have a consent agenda tonight. Our last study meeting was canceled. We will go directly to unfinished business. Item number one, with that one, I am going to remove it and put it on the next regular agenda per the request of Councilman Scott Barr, who was called out of town, and this is a topic that he's specifically interested in. So we will move on to item number two, new business. That is a request to accept a license agreement coming to us from the Department of Law between the City of Livonia and ADS...excuse me, ADCS LLC to allow the 16th District Courthouse to perform drug testing services for defendants who are required to do so by court order. Can I have a motion?
I'll for approving.
We have an approving from McCullough, second from Toy. Are we going to go to Department of Law first?
No, this is actually a court...this is actually something from the court, but they were unfamiliar with how to use our new civic clerk, so we were helping them out and put it through the law department. But it's actually...the law department reviewed the contract and assisted drafting it, but this is actually the brainchild of the court.
Judge Natalie?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Judge Kavanaugh. This is Natalie Stacheska, our court administrator.
Good evening.
And back there, we have Kate Warden, our probation officer, one of our three probation officers. Thank you for having us tonight. This is a request to approve what normally be a lease agreement. The law department couched it as a license agreement, and that's for various reasons, but it really doesn't affect the intent. What we wanted to do is have some testing for drug and alcohol services in our court. Typically, we would refer people to outside agencies to do this. Recently, and we've always wanted to do this in our court, but just kind of sped it up, because two agencies that we had referred them to were bought out and combined, then the price doubled. So our...and most of our people have to pay for this themselves, and they can't afford it, basically. And the service is not as good as it used to be. So we thought we'd bring a new agency into our court to take samples, and there's no blood testing going on, but it's urine and sometimes breath samples. And they bring them out to an outside laboratory. I think it's in Southfield. Is that where it is? And we're going to do this in the mornings before the court opens, and then after the court closes, for hour and a half each day?
Two hours.
Two hours on both ends. So it won't affect...the parking lot will not be full, and then people come and go, and we don't have everybody coming at once. They're scheduled over five, actually, seven days a week. They're coming on Saturdays and Sundays also. And there is a...since the council is involved on this, the city is the landlord. The city owns the building. We're the tenants, and we want to have this new company come in and do the testing. So they're going to pay rent, and we originally were going to have them tear down a wall and put a bigger facility in one end of the courthouse. But what we did is work something out that can use basically what was an old janitor's wash closet, put a refrigerator in there for their samples they have during the day. So there's been no construction, other than putting one of those scissor gates up to prevent people from going into the rest of the courthouse while this is being run. So it's very minor impact on the court building itself, and so the city is receiving the rent, not the court, $1,300 a month. And we're asking for your approval of this. The tenant will get their own insurance, a million-dollar policy, and we think it's good for our defendants that have to test, and it's good for the court, and it's good for the city.
Thank you, Judge.
Any questions from you, Ms. Stacheska?
Any questions from the council? Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Judge, for being here. Thanks for your team being here. My civic clerk isn't working ironically. I can't get my civic clerk to log in right now. How long was this lease agreement, or how long do you want it to be so far?
Well, the initial term is two years. There's a 60-day opt-out. Either party can get out at any time if it doesn't go right. And right now, we're going to be testing just the people who we have on our docket here in the City of Livonia 16th District Court, which is really state of Michigan. But the provider wants to expand it to different courthouses, because they're having the same problem we are. And we're kind of reluctant to do that at this point. We don't know how many people will be coming, and we don't want to overwhelm the system. But we may be coming back for a different...actually, we can just expand the contract that we're having with this testing agency, if that happens. And we'll be looking for some compensation to reimburse the city and the court for that.
Great. Great, thank you, Judge. Thanks for your service to our community.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I don't see any questions from the council. Is there any audience comment on this item? I don't see any. I'll ask Ms. Nash to take the vote.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. That item is approved. We'll move on to item number three. A request for issuance of a permit for wage shows to hold a carnival amusement operation at Ford Field and Veterans Park, June 20th through 25th of 2023.
I'll move approval.
Well, there's a couple of things here. During reference hours, also a permit for a fireworks display by American Fireworks, Inc. to be held at 10:15 PM on Sunday, June 25th, at Veterans Park, and authorization to use and lease the facilities at Ford Field, Eddie Edgar Arena, in Stomalski Veterans Park during Spree 73. This comes to us from Sam Karagno, President of the Livonia Anniversary Committee. And we have an approving from Ms. Toy. Do I have a second?
Support.
We have support from McCullough. Mr. Karagno, is there anything specifically...I'm going to ask you here. We have item number three, and then we also have items four and five that are also Spree-related. If you care to address all three at this point in time, we'd be happy to hear it.
Well, good evening, council. These are pretty standard proposals to the city council for the Livonia Spree. This is Spree number 73 for this year. I'm relatively new to the Spree presidency. I am the president this year, and we're working through typical procedures with the Spree for many years past, with a close eye on things that are changing and moving forward.
Thank you, sir. Is there any comment from the council? Any questions? We'll go to McCullough and then Morgan.
Thanks, Council President. To the Chair, to Mr. Karagno, congratulations on the role of president.
Thank you.
Excited. You know, you see this on there. I know, obviously, the weather's changing, but the 73rd Spree, let's get it going. Everybody's excited for that, and a little bit of normalcy. Wish you luck. I'm sure it'll be a stressful position, but it's always a great event for the city.
There's a lot of work that goes into it, and we're working with a lot of people on the board and the committee and volunteers. So, yeah, there is a lot of work here. Absolutely true.
Anything you need from council, I'm sure any of us would like to help out, so just let us know.
We'll have to be careful what you ask for. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan?
So I have actually a couple of questions for Sam and also our city attorney. First of all, I go to the city attorney. Paul, if you could tell me, I know the city had made some requests of the Spree Committee regarding the format on how they handle their finances and things like that, and what exactly the city's output would be. So my question to you would be is, do you...can you tell me what those were? I can tell you probably most of them. We had a meeting...the Spree Committee had a meeting that I attended representing the mayor at the Spree Committee. There was concerns by the mayor and by some members of council that was brought to the administration about some past performances with the Spree and the organization of the Spree. As you know, COVID caused a lot of problems. One of them was we didn't have a Spree for a couple of years. Consequently, one of the problems that arose that we saw when we were looking at it was that because of that and other reasons, maybe all of the bylaws weren't being followed like they should have been. So we took a look at that, and we wanted to ensure that the bylaws were, in fact, amended to a certain degree, and that the bylaws were, in fact, followed. One of the problems was, was there was not elections like there should have been, because there wasn't Spree's. So there was a meeting where the board was selected. There was assurances that there would be an election for the executive member board, which now Mr. Karagno, because of that, is the president. I think most of the board probably has been changed as a result of it. We also put in a request from the city. Again, the city is a partner. We have several votes on the board. Council has a vote. The mayor's office has a vote, and the police department have a vote, but that's only three of the many votes that there are. And as a representative of the city, we also wanted to ensure the fiscal responsibility of it, and we requested that there be an audit, not necessarily when it would be, but we would like to see, just for the protection of the Spree Board, the city and everybody involved, it's good business practice, is that you have an audit. As was once said, you trust but verify. That's what we do with organizations like that. We want to ensure the non-tax status of this organization, so we wanted to make sure that the proper checks and balances were in place, that being one of them, the finance. We also requested of the board that...this has become a rather large operation and a business. We requested and suggested to the board that the city would prefer that there be an executive director who actually handled the day-to-day. Asking any volunteer to do it day-to-day, we believed was problematic for a variety of reasons. And so the board had agreed and, in fact, hired, or is in the process of hiring an executive director to actually run the day-to-day operations of the Spree, the business practice of it. My understanding is that the board has also agreed to conduct an audit. I don't think it'll happen until after the Spree, because we're too close in time, so that the taxes and all the forms are properly filled out. There has been amendments to the bylaws, reducing the number of the board. We thought 20 was way too many members, and it had a very specific number of 20. It was also amended, I'm going by memory, to allow different people to actually join the board, because it was fairly restrictive, and we're trying to make it more inclusive. So that was changed. So a lot of those different functions were addressed by the board or are being addressed by the board, if that answers the question. It does, yeah. So we've...so far, we've seen a few of these things, probably 50%, it sounds like, what our requests were are being moved in the right direction. There is...there's no question. It cannot all be done right away. It's...this is an organization that's been around for a long time, and to change the bylaws, to change different things, to hire an executive director, and to do an audit, will take some time and effort to do. But it is...it appears to me, from the conversations I've had, that this board is on the path to accomplish those goals. Okay. And to the Chair, also, if...what is the city's exposure liability regarding the Spree? What output do we have as far as the city? I know that that's an entire week, as far as if the Spree does not get this completed. I'm sorry. I mean, as far as the things that we discuss and what their tasks were to complete, if they're not able to do that, what is the city's liability and exposure? Do we have insurance for them for the... The city is not a...the city is not a party to any of the contracts that the Spree Committee has with any of the vendors, if that's what you're asking. Okay. The city is one vote in...well, the mayor has one vote, council has one vote, and the police department have one vote of 15 votes on the Spree Committee. This is a separate organization that is not... This is a, this is a separate organization that is not a part of the city. We, it's our property, the city is greatly involved in it, because we have to be, but this is not a city function as such.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Paul. Sam, I have just pretty much one, a couple, actually, a couple questions, but as far as the finances of the Spree, I know you're working on getting this in order, I know we've talked about this. Is there going to be some type of spreadsheet that's provided to the city regarding the finances, that, the incoming, outgoing, everything with the Spree, and so, we can kinda look at that and know exactly what the city's output for the taxpayers is gonna be, in now and in the future? And I realize you can't produce that right now, but what's your plan?
Yes, we have, we have some prior year information, and we're tracking this year's information, as we're starting to spend monies and secure acts and events for this year, but yes, we'll have, we have a new treasurer, Chris DePonyo, she's working to gather last year's information, compare it to this year's information, and many years past information, so we will, we will have some documents for you, yes.
Okay. And when, do you have any idea when we'll be able to review these? I mean?
Following this, following this year's event, I would have to think by, let's say, August, September, we'll have everything in order, what we've paid, what expenses we've had, what revenues we had.
Okay, very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, appreciate everything you did in stepping up and for the Spree.
President Jolly?
Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, President Jolly. Thanks, Mr. Carigno, for being here, and thank you to our city attorney for answering some of those questions. A few of the questions I have is, while it's not a sanctioned Livonia event, it's not a Livonia event, but perception is reality. People perceive that the Livonia City Spree is ran by the city of Livonia, so I'd like to say kudos to the mayor and to the administration for realizing that, listen, this is a large organization, and you need an executive director, you need someone that is doing the day-to-day operational controls here, and making sure that everything is done correctly. I mean, there's legal documentation, there's tax documentation, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars that goes into this organization throughout that week and throughout that year. So, I thought it made a lot of sense that the mayor's administration did that, I think that was very smart by the mayor and the entire city of Livonia. We talk about money, how much money, I've always tried to understand this, what does a city, does a city make anything off of this, or is, for all the resources we put into this, does the Spree pay us back? Do we invoice the Spree for all the money, for the DPW, for the parks and recreation, for the police officers, all these sorts of different things that go into making a successful event?
Unfortunately, I'm probably the wrong person to answer that question. I, you know, have a hard enough time balancing my checkbook at home. That's, Mr. Slater would have the answer to those. It's my understanding that we do not charge for the park, but it's my understanding that we do charge, we do charge for various things, the police, the reserves, various services we provide, that we, that we do submit a bill to them, and they do pay that, but the exact numbers, I don't know. Going back to what you said before, and I want to point this out, just in case I wasn't clear on it, when we were talking about doing an audit and checking things, nobody is suggesting or has any evidence, or even a hint, that there's any impropriety on it. I mean, this is a large, this is a group of people who have been working on this for years, and putting in a great deal of effort for it. This is a huge operation, and quite frankly, you're asking an awful lot of these folks not to have a professional do it. Quite frankly, if I was the treasurer, I would want to have somebody looking at my books, so I could say, nothing's happened that was untoward. So, nobody is suggesting for a second, and I don't want anybody to take that we think that something has happened that's improper or illegal. It's, this is a big operation that needs to be run just a little bit differently than it has in the past.
Absolutely, especially with the scrutiny today, and the level of technology that's involved with filing different forms through the government, and just, you have to come to the city for certain approvals, you have to go through a whole host of different professional entities to get done what you guys do, and to your port, Mr. Bernier, I mean, the Spree Committee, the people in the anniversary committee dedicate a lot of, a lot of their time, which is voluntary, they don't make money off of volunteering their time. I think it is a big deal, and I think it gives them just more, it just gives off, conveys more professionalism, when they have an executive director in place to run those day-to-day operations. The board, you know, votes for that individual, and they are tasked with those things move forward. So, you, Mr. Carigno, moving forward, I know that there's an emphasis on auditing the books now, and maybe having cleaner books, will you be able to get us in the future? You know, what is the city's exposure? What do we, how much do we pay, or how much does the city get paid, reimbursed for the services? Will those numbers be more solidified in the future?
Absolutely, we'll get you those numbers. Yes, sir.
Awesome. Well, first and foremost, congratulations to being elected the president of the board, and I wish you guys a really successful year, it's nice to see the Spree come back for a second time, and I know Mr. Duggan's been involved for many years as well. So, thanks to all the board members for all the hard work you do, and thanks for being able to come back before city council provided some of those financial documentations to get a better understanding of what the city spends. Thank you, Mr. Carigno, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We'll go to Ms. Toy and then Mr. Morgan.
Well, Sam, poor Sam was stuck with a wonderful job here. So, Sam, I just want to say kudos to you, and to the board, and the executive board, and all, all that's been of Spree. I remember in the McNamara days, when we first started Spree, I'm that old now, I know that's hard to believe for you, but anyhow, in all seriousness, this, this event was second to the Michigan State Fair at one time. I don't know how it ranks, probably Mr. Bigger, or some, Mr. Duggan might remember, but, I mean, it's amazing what we've done, and, and I know that this board, you know, just being on it for the last few months, it's amazing what people have put together and come together to do, and, and kudos to you guys. I mean, the volunteers it takes, and I know you're gonna give a shout out for more volunteers we need this year, that we've talked about, and, you know, I mean, I just want to say, God bless you for doing the job, and all the people that volunteer, and take their vacations during that week, and either get sweaty or rained on, one of the two, but thank you very much. And these were great questions, but I think, as our city attorney said, there's no discrepancies going on here, and I appreciate all your help, thank you.
Well, thank you. We will take all the volunteers we can get, we hope to see all of you out at the Spree, whether it's raining or shining, and we'll take all the help we can get all the time.
Okay, we'll take the last comment from Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify, if it sounded like I was implying that there was any impropriety in the past, that was not the case, I was just, we like to see things on the paper, and if there's money coming into the city and going out, I wasn't in any way inferring that the previous or past board was doing anything improper, because I know that's not the case. I know many of them for years, and that's not, but I just wanted to clarify, because...
Yeah, I understood, I understood it that way, Mr. Morgan, and if I, and I didn't mean to infer anything other than that. It's, in my, in my history, you know, 30-some years of prosecuting cases, a lot of felony cases over the years, it's quite frankly, whenever, I cringe, given the number of embezzlement cases I've seen in my lifetime, that I've prosecuted, most of them deal with bad business practices, it's people you trust, who maybe aren't, shouldn't be trusted, that's why you have, that's why you have a system of audits and checks.
That's right, that's right. Okay, thank you, I'm...
Thank you, we have an approving on the floor. Is there any comment from the audience on item number three?
Mr. Duggan? Ask, ask the former treasurer, everything that was done was in QuickBooks, so you can get the numbers tomorrow or the next day, it's just a matter of someone knowing how to get the reports. Every dollar went in, every dollar went out, so it's, the reports are there.
Okay.
And I, and I appreciate the fact that you guys are not, the past councils were great, I was asked to be treasurer again, but no way in heck, and Sammy, he's gonna realize, what, he made a mistake, but...
Thank you, Mr.
And we do need help, and even young girls can help, too.
That's why she's here.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Duggan. Ms. Nash, take the vote.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. We have five votes to approve, we'll move on to item number four, hopefully with less dialogue. This is a request to close the Stark Road from the LAD, the Livonia Athletic Direct, excuse me, Livonia Athletic District at 14255 Stark Road, to Linden, and Linden from Farmington to Stark Road, to traffic from 8:00 AM, June 19th through noon on June 26th, and to request that the city seek permission from the Wayne County Road Commission to allow the closure of Farmington Road between I-96 and Five Mile Road from 6:00 PM through 11:00 PM on June 25th, in connection with the Spree fireworks coming to us again from the Spree via Mr. Carigno. Do I have a motion?
Motion for approval?
I'll give it to Mr. Morgan, and a second from Mr.
Support.
A second from Mr. McCullough. Any comment from the council? I see none. Any comments from the audience on item number four? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote on four.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. We have five to approve four, we'll move on to item number five. This is also from the Spree, a request to display banners on Farmington Road and Five Mile Road from May 19th through May 26th, and a four-by-eight sign at City Hall in Ford Field from May 24th through June 26th, again, from the Spree via Mr. Carigno. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Toy, support by McCullough. Is there any audience comment? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote on five.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.